Mayor Colley, welcome to the June 4 Town Council Work Session. This virtual meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams Live Meeting to maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the Town Council while following guidelines related to social distancing and public gatherings. This meeting is being streamed simultaneously on both the Town of Morrisville Facebook page and the Town of Morrisville website. On Monday, June 8, we plan to upload a video of this meeting to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on Town of Morrisville's social media pages. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future Town Council meetings, or feel free to email Town Clerk at townofmorrisville.org with any questions. We are now at Item 2, Roll Call. I now recognize Town Clerk Eric Smith to conduct a roll call of council attendees. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councils present.
Thank you. We have one action item this evening, that's the motion to invoke Rule 19. I would now entertain a motion so that we can conduct this meeting virtually. I recognize Councilmember Steve Rao.
I move that we invoke, make a motion that we invoke Rule 19.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I recognize Mayor Protem Liz Johnson.
Well, okay, I'll second that, but I thought Councilmember Fender seconded it.
Okay. I'll recognize Councilmember Fender's second. So I have Steve Rao with the motion, Councilmember Fender with the second. All those in favor, please say aye when Town Clerk does the roll call vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
Motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We have one work session this evening to discuss the proposed annual operating budget. I'll now recognize Town Manager Page to begin.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. I'm pleased to indicate that we have no additional scenarios to present to you tonight. We have prepared updated budget ordinance items based on council's consensus from our May 28 meeting, and I'd like to pass it to Jeannie Hooks to review that for Town Council.
Okay. Everybody ready? This is exciting, I have to say. So, when we last met, you really landed on this Scenario S, and as a result, the Town Manager actually sent you an illustrated version of this out via email for everyone to review in advance, and of course, it was attached to this briefing item. The scenario really represents, I believe, a culmination of your collective council interest and values, and at a high level, it reduced really some reoccurring expenses. It invested in future transportation or roadway improvements, focused on some traffic congestion and safety interests, and really promotes the sustainability and smart city innovations that you are most interested in. And it includes also these forward-facing quality-of-life items such as food hub and cultural programming that you also expressed a high interest in. I think it truly offers, I believe, something that each council member can really stand behind and support, I hope. That's something we'll check in with you tonight. You did express an interest to come together one more time and just check in after the scenario was sent to you. The modified budget totals $37.9 million for both the General Fund and the Stormwater combined. The scenario sets the tax rate, or proposes a set tax rate, at .36 cents. It generally reduced the number of full-time positions from 13 to 6, and I'll just briefly go over those. Four, I believe, full-time implementations were the Sustainability and Solid Waste Coordinator, the Human Resource Specialist, the Network and Security Administrator, and the Athletics and Facility Maintenance Technician. With also a couple that were half-year implementations, the Senior Rec Specialist and the Traffic Safety Officer. The Sustainability Funds were restored back to the original ask of $100,000. It also put $900,000 towards council-desired roadway and transportation reserves. That's an equivalent of 1.5 cents this time on your tax rate, approximately. And it uses really, in balancing this budget, still uses a reasonable fund balance appropriation that we think we can work with. All actions, action items have been modified, and I'll just briefly go through and identify where the changes occurred, and I am happy to report that your budget proposal for Scenario S is balanced. So, let me run through this real quick. So you'll see here your main budget ordinance. We've adjusted the General Fund revenues, the total balance as a result. Your total expenditures, again, we balanced each one of the items to total a balanced budget for expenditures. We've modified the adjustments for the Debt Service Fund. If you recall, when we removed the bond items, we had to therefore reduce what we were sending out to the Debt Service Fund, because the bond administrative costs were a part of this Debt Service Fund appropriation. We have modified the levy of the tax rate to .36 cents, and we've adjusted the number of positions that you are authorizing the Town Manager to work with in the year. And we have added the stipulation of allowing the Town Manager, one of the reduction items was succession planning. You all found that important, strategy to still accomplish that without appropriation of dollars is to utilize lapsed salary. So I've added that stipulation to what I call the Town Manager's special authorities that the budget ordinance grants. And then from there, everything else remained the same. And then something that I would also note in our conversation last is that we did make a point to say post-audit, when you do know what your fund balance really is, that's when it's measured, at the end of each audit, that we could revisit some of the deferred equipment reserves and other capital items at that time, after an assessment mid-year of really what the economy is doing. I think that's something else to comment on. I wanted to report to you that the Budget Portal, it still remains open until midnight on June 10 for public comments. As of to date, actually, within the past five minutes, we have not received any additional comments through the Budget Portal, and I have checked the social media streams earlier today and have not picked up on any additional questions at this time. So what I would like to focus council on, since you were interested in just having a check-in, is really two important things really left to discuss at this point. One is if there was any final directions on your modified proposed budget that you crafted together as we proceed to the public hearing on June 9. And then the second thing relates to the public hearing, with respect to conducting a public hearing, is under the COVID limitations, what is council's expectations, what that would look like on June 9. So at that point, Mayor, and Town Manager, if there's anything else you would add?
No, I will just, again, reiterate that we would continue to put through our work plans and our scheduling of items, those trigger points we talked about at two various times in the year that allow us to monitor our revenues and report those to you, and bring you back together to explore where we're at and what you might want to do with that information.
So at this point, Mayor, I think we hand it back to council to consider those two, what we think are the two items left to discuss. If there's any final direction on your collected modified proposed budget, and then just to have a brief discussion to get a feel for what council's interest in conducting a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you both. Ms. Hooks, thank you very much for that very nice, high-level summary about where we've arrived as a group for this budget iteration. As you noted, next Tuesday, we're having a public hearing, so this is not final. We're still taking more input, and we're looking forward to hearing from more of the residents. Now, open it up if any of the council members would like to make any comments of the budget right now. Ideally, what we'd like to hear, if possible, is that in agreement with how it looks right now, we're looking forward to hearing further resident input, but for now, it sounds good. So I'll now recognize Mayor Protem Liz Johnson, and then we can talk about the public hearing after everyone gets a chance to speak about the budget itself first. Mayor Protem?
Okay. Oh, I would, thank you, Mayor. I was going to agree, I think we've come to a good place together on what Jeannie has just outlined for us. The public is welcome to weigh in in all the ways they have to this point. I have continued to tell folks that we are capturing, like Jeannie said, we are capturing comments through social media, through email, and through the Budget Portal, and she is sharing all of that with council. So so far, that's been working great, and I'm looking forward to moving forward, and did you want, I'll comment on the public hearing portion right now. I think what we've been doing, allowing the public to virtually participate, has been working well, and I think that would be fine for this moving forward. Thank you.
So to clarify, emailing in advance their comments and then having Town Clerk Smith read them, or something different?
No, as we have handled comments to this point. I realize this is a public hearing, thank you for clarification. I realize this is a public hearing versus just public comments, but I think we've handled that well to this point, and I would continue, let's continue to give the public the opportunity to weigh in virtually with the public hearing.
Okay. That sounds great. I'll now recognize Councilmember Steve Rao for a comment.
Well, I wanted to thank everyone on the council and the staff who've worked so hard to get us to this point. I think that each of you have brought some really, really good points during this whole process, and I think it is a budget that I feel does invest in many areas of our strategic plan, transportation, mobility, the smart city, the innovations, sustainability, and I think also taking into effect, into account the impact on the business community and residents who are affected during an uncertain time. But I think this budget will give us a chance to invest and move forward, and I also think, I'm in support, I'm glad we did this work session tonight, because I think it allows us to show it to the public one more time, and then I support, you know, the public hearing that we're going to have, and, but I just want to thank also the staff, Jeannie and Martha, for all the work, and all of the work that you all have done with all the scenarios and all the modeling. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any comments right now, but I'd like to share a quick something, and then we'll see if anyone else wants to chime in. I want to echo Councilmember Rao and Mayor Protem's thoughts, and thanking everyone for their hard work by both staff and council, and I look forward to more public input via the portal in advance of next Tuesday's meeting. I do, I also appreciate the balance we have struck between moving forward with the plans we have created with our stakeholders, and keeping in mind that many people and businesses may be struggling to make ends meet and stay in business given the COVID pandemic a few months down the road. So I hope that when we get to mid-year, we keep in mind that it takes more than just dollars to provide the programs and services our residents have made clear they need. We need to keep recruiting and retaining the world-class staff, which is the true engine of our progress of our town. It is their efforts which will help our town do more than simply survive, but will help Morrisville thrive and meet its potential. At this point, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to thank the council for doing the work to all come together and developing a really great budget, and the staff, you know, Martha and Jeannie, running all these iterations of scenarios. I was, you know, we still had a few more letters to go in the alphabet we've used up, but no, thankfully, we have ended with Scenario S. And, you know, I just want to highlight to the public that, you know, despite the economic, you know, we, climate that we're in right now, you know, I think we took a, you know, a positive approach to this and got a real balance, like you were saying, Mayor, moving things forward while still taking into account the, you know, the situation that a lot of families and people are in. So I wanted to highlight, though, for the public that, you know, one of the things that I think is huge in this budget is the addition of the Sustainability Program Coordinator. You know, this is pretty significant. You know, other municipalities have a Sustainability Program Coordinator, and I'm just very grateful that we are now moving in this direction as well. And if you allow me just a couple more seconds, I just wanted to read from the budget, you know, what this entails for the public, for people listening now or in the future. You know, "This position is a professional position responsible for developing, coordinating, and promoting effective sustainability initiatives to reduce the town's impact on the environment, particularly in the areas of solid waste recycling, facility enhancements, and fleet management. This position would also work closely with the development and implementation of the smart city initiatives, the Morrisville Environmental Stormwater Committee, and the community at large to enhance public support for an engagement in new and existing environmentally friendly programs and activities." And then in addition to this position, we've also included in the budget funds for sustainability initiatives such as solar panels, and then we've also included funds for the smart city initiatives that we want to start implementing in our town. And the last thing that I think, you know, people should really be aware of is we are than what we did last year. So, you know, that's fairly significant. You know, we didn't get everything in the budget that we want, but I think it's pretty significant. You know, there's other things in here too, but I think, you know, we accomplished a lot, and it really wasn't as painful as I thought it was going to be. So, thank you all.
I'm glad it wasn't as painful. Councilmember Robati for a comment.
Yeah, I also wanted to thank my fellow council members. Councilmember Fender touched on the two biggest things that I'm happy about in this budget, and I did just want to recognize that it was Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson that encouraged us to put that extra money toward the Transportation Fund because of the uncertainty about whether the Department of Transportation would be able to fulfill its commitments to Morrisville in a timely manner. So, that's one thing, and, you know, I just wanted to say that when we were on the campaign trail, Donna and I, the two things that people wanted to talk about were sustainability and roads. And, yeah, I really feel like this budget has addressed both of those, and I'm very happy that we were able to do that without incur, without incurring too much of a penalty on our small businesses or on our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to echo that this has been a very difficult time to be making a budget, and with a lot of uncertainty, I think we have a reasonable path forward. We are introducing new initiatives like sustainability, but transportation is being expanded, which I know that Councilmember Fender and Robati already said this, but as a member, alternate member of the CAMPO representation, I am very keen on making sure that Morrisville is represented strongly when being considered for NC DOT projects, and I'm watching them every day. It's a very difficult time for NC DOT, because they are undergoing a crisis in their funding model, and so for our town to step up and not only continue to invest in our transportation projects, but to enhance that for this year by half a cent, really speaks volumes to how much we are committed as a town to making Morrisville even better. We might have to step up more in the future on transportation due to some of the slowing of the projects by NC DOT, and I feel like our council is aligned in making sure that transportation stays at the top of our priorities. So, stay tuned, if things get better, we can do even more projects, like several of the council members said, but after all is said and done, we still need to make a commitment to transportation, as it is not just our roads, it's also our sidewalks, our intersections, our greenways, and our bike lanes, and other means of transportation like the shuttle, which is something that we are going to hear about more in the next year, how we're going to begin identifying areas across our town that could be potential bus stops. So, stay tuned on that. But anyways, great job, everybody. Thank you all for listening and also working together.
Thank you, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Hey, Jeannie, this, the one that we are talking is Scenario S, right?
Scenario S is in Sam, yes.
Yeah, no, S as in Satish, that's the reason I'm fine with it.
That's what we should have named this scenario.
Yeah. But nevertheless, I want to thank you and Martha coming up with all the scenarios, and we should have pulled it till Z, but I think we gave it up on S. That's okay. And it is, you know, checks and balances, so I, I'm pretty happy, because we got the money bucket into the transportation, which I think we can still pump more money in there, and the Smart Shuttle is a good project, and sustainability, and then followed by, even though there are small items like the putting money into our cultural things, and also $20,000 for, I think, VILL to create more videos, so that would be wonderful. So I am pretty happy, and I'm sure, you know, as staff, you guys will be happy with your staff that you wanted, so it's kind of a balance. So I'm making sure, like, you know, we all set for next year's bond, so start working towards that. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Garamella. So, it sounds like we're all very thankful. It sounds like we are all happy with the budget Scenario S, as in Satish, at this time, and we look forward to hearing more from the public. We didn't hear a lot of feedback about the public hearing. Jeannie, if you could go over if there's a decision point about that, or pretty much people are going to give their input, and it'll be summarized for us, so we have something to react to.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
We have, we have had, so you've got multiple methods for the budget in particular. The public often chooses to provide input in a manner that's more familiar to them, which is why we are ensuring that we're capturing those, so that you have those coming through your Budget Portal. For your official public hearing, if we follow the same form and practice, it would open up the public hearing at 9:00 a.m. and leave it open till 3:00 p.m. That would allow Town Clerk Smith to compile those comments and send them to you prior to our meeting, and then when recognized during the meeting, he would be able to summarize those. They become part of the public record and are available. Council could choose to have them read if they wish to have that done, but we have been summarizing those comments.
Okay. So I think we're probably okay with going with summarizing. I see we have a comment from our Strategic Program Manager, Erin Hudson, so I'll recognize her first before I try to summarize.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. I appreciate the recognition. Really quick, for public hearings currently, under the legislation for virtual meetings in declared state of emergency, they, I believe, still have to remain open for a period of time after the public hearing closes during the meeting, and I do not recall if that applies only to zoning items, or if that is public hearings in general, but I wanted to just put that out there, let staff confirm, so we can let you all know if by chance additional comments would come in after your public hearing closed during your meeting on Tuesday.
Thank you, Erin, for the clar-
Go on, Town Manager.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. You are correct. Public hearings in general, it's not just zoning, must remain open for 24 hours after the hearing at the meeting. What we have done for our other public hearing meeting is leave them open till midnight for just simplicity the next day, and then providing council any additional comments, or at least a notification that we did not receive any additional comments. So, the 3 o'clock would just be a cutoff where Eric would be able to send you what we had received so far.
Okay. Thank you for those clarifications. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati at this time.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I would like to hear the comments read, the comments from the public. I'd like to hear them read at full. I don't anticipate that there would be that many, but those that are, I think they should be fully heard by council.
Thanks for sharing that. Mayor Protem Johnson?
I would agree with that. Could we maybe put some time, typically, we put a timeframe around that, just in case it goes long, but I agree with you, and there may not, there may not be a whole lot, but in case there are, maybe we, you know, we limit it to, I want to say 20 or 30 minutes, which is our typical, when we limit for public hearings.
And I would add to that, that maybe three minutes per comment as well.
Ah, that's a good point. I like that idea. That's, yeah, because typically, we would do that. And I just want to say again, I think, I would, I do not want the public to have to feel compelled to walk into the council chambers, so I think this is a good way of allowing them to participate virtually. But I agree, yes, limiting the three minutes for each comment, that's probably fair too, which we, what we would typically do anyhow.
Okay. So if I could make a proposal for staff to react to, we would read comments in their entirety, up to three minutes each by the Town Clerk. If we have more than 10, the council would decide how many to do, if after 10, we just summarize, or something like that, and we could decide that at the meeting itself. Don't need to try to solve a problem that may- Don't need to try to solve a problem that may not exist. Would that be, and just to be clear, the public, this is the way to give public hearing comments. There will be no public entering the chambers at all. Is that accurate? That's not an option?
Are you asking staff that?
I'm asking staff to confirm that, because that was mentioned. We don't want them to feel compelled to come in, but I don't think that's even an option. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we have obviously prepared some preliminary plans as we would be working through the phases to potentially proceed to that, but we have remained committed to the limiting of 10. And if four or five of you plus core staff is here, we don't have the capacity to do that anyway.
Okay. So this is how we will be receiving public hearing input, is by 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. the day of, and it will continue to be open until midnight on the 10th. So I think that's a fair summary. Do any other council members have a comment or a question about that? Does staff have what they need?
I have what I need to proceed. Communications is going to be helping me with putting some of this information out there, so people know how to provide comments and what the timeframe is. And we will be updating the website tomorrow and also starting some social media to remind folks that the public hearing is on June 9th and where to find updated budget proposal.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the next item. We are now at other discussion topics. So at this time, we introduced this so that we'd have an opportunity to use the rest of this meeting to discuss things that we haven't had a chance to discuss over the last few months. I propose that we might take a look at it in a roundtable format. It would be good to have some comments about how long we'd like to spend on this portion of the meeting. I would suggest that everyone has a chance to introduce one item first, and then we could see where we are. And so I'm looking for comments at this time, if anyone has any thoughts about that as a plan going forward, or if they want to introduce a time limit at this time. Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and shoot for, I'll recognize Mayor Protem, Councilmember Skargens-Johnson, please.
Let's try to set a limit right now for an hour. And, you know, we can reassess at the end of 60 minutes, but I think that the intent was not to be a very long meeting, but yet we do, probably the majority of us have a short item to share with the council.
Thank you, Councilmember Skargens-Johnson. Councilmember Rau.
I was saying 30 minutes, but I guess I can do an hour, that's fine.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Johnson.
I just want to make sure that we stood a time limit.
Okay. I'm Mayor Protem Johnson.
So I was going to suggest, why don't we use this in that roundtable format, limit it to, I think an hour is probably appropriate. 30 minutes, I'm sorry, Steve, 30 minutes, I'm not sure that that's going to cut it. And do a check-in at an hour, I think that's fine. But I, I think if we do the roundtable kind of format where it's quick, I think would be appropriate. And if staff has some items, maybe let them go first. I'll, I'll promise to go last, so that I might fall out the hour.
Councilmember Garamella.
I agree. I think, I was in fact thinking before Martha heard something, I don't have anything, so I will yield my time to anyone. So I can make it quicker, but Martha basically said she has a few items, so, but I think, but I think 7:30 is the deadline. Let's see if we can do it. If not, we'll push it to whenever we can.
Okay. Seeing no other comments right now, is it okay with the rest of the council to go with Mayor Protem Johnson's suggestion, let staff go ahead and go first? And hopefully those will be pretty quick, so we don't push up against an hour for us. Do I see some head nods on that? It's okay, let staff go first? Okay, I'm seeing head nods. I'll pass it back to Town Manager Page if we can run through yours, then we'll go ahead and have some time for the council to bring forth items that they feel are important to our residents. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first one's just a quick and easy update, that a variety of staff are working regularly and diligently to monitor the things going on in Wade County and that could potentially impact our community. In particular, two specific topics of signs and protests that we are working on, putting together some information that we will be sharing with you to keep you updated on what we're doing, to keep our community prepared and safe while able to express their views appropriately. So we are working on that, and we will be able to provide you some additional information on that, we believe, tomorrow. Can I answer any specific questions about that at this time? The next one is a big one, and it got handed to me less than 30 minutes ago. And I will offer that we have added Ben Howe to the meeting in the event that we want to pull him in, but he has been contacted by Campo with a question about whether council would want to consider moving the Morrisville Carpenter Project forward with a deferral of reimbursement. And if there was a deferral of reimbursement, how long we would be willing to defer requesting reimbursement? And the options that were presented were six months, a year, two to three years. And they want an answer ASAP.
ASAP being before Tuesday, is what I'm hearing from you.
Tomorrow morning.
Okay. Can we have a little bit more context around how that affects fund balance and cash flow needs? Because I understand that in the introduction of this budget, you made sure that we would make, we would have enough fund balance to proceed with this project and delay the reimbursement. So if we could hear some confirmation that that's not going to put us in a cash flow or financial bind, I think that'll help us make an informed decision.
So I think the simple answer to that is I can make you no more promises than, than we currently recommended maintaining that fund balance so that we could let that contract with the expectation of it would restrict most, if not all, of our fund balance at the initial onset, and that would be relieved as we received reimbursements. So the longer we agree to defer reimbursements, probably the more likelihood that we would be allowed to proceed with that project, but that would continue to keep our fund balance somewhat encumbered for that and not other items, which in a worst-case scenario could interfere or influence what we would have for other items or if the economy was in jeopardy. We, we would be able to use or encumber your roadway and transportation reserve for a roadway and transportation project, so that we would not use those funds for anything else until we were receiving reimbursements and reduce the impact on our fund balance. Again, we will not know what our fund balance number is until our audit is complete. What we provide you during the budget are estimates, they're good estimates, but that real number doesn't occur till after our audit. There are other mechanisms that we could explore to borrow money on a short-term basis or through some other strategy to cash flow for ourselves. We have not had time to explore or look at that at all since we got this inquiry.
I will agree with Town Manager Page's assessment on fund balance. I, since just hearing this, yes, I didn't even have time to tell Jeannie, no surprise. But I, but I, as, as the wheels are spinning in my head rapidly, I think you'll be faced with the same impact, whether it's now, whether it's six months or a year. You're still needing to cash flow this project. It still impacts you as a town. I think the difference here, or the big unknown, is really where the economy is going to go and how this fiscal year ends, as Town Manager Page has indicated. And I will affirm, there are no promises that we can give you at this time, other than us knowing and being aware of the situation and the circumstances, and that this is a critical project for the town of Morrisville. And there, there are other ways and strategies, as you've learned with this budget, that you can meet and accomplish your goals. And staff has the experience and expertise to be able to help you find those ways, no matter the timing of it. But there are, there are some unknowns that I'll just reaffirm and state, that we can't make those kind of promises at this particular stage, but.
And again, just before I turn it back over to the council to discuss, there are financing strategies that we could explore. We can't do those unilaterally. I believe we've shown you that we have the capacity to do that. We, for example, have in CIP proposed model, a large public works project that we showed could be part of an overall financing strategy. This wouldn't have been the one that we would look at that, and it might change timing on that one, but it could also be just a temporary situation until that reimbursement. But we also have some formal procedures for borrowing money, including going to the LGC, that take time and effort, even if it's not a bond referendum. We are just not allowed to go out and borrow money without going through the local government commission, and that would just take some time to do. And we would have the time to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the update from the budget team. We have some comments. I'll start with Mayor Protem Johnson, and then Councilmember Skargens-Johnson, please.
So Martha, I really, I have a question first, and then I, I have some comments. But go over again what you said about the six-month, one-year, two to three years. Those are options we get to choose from? I'm trying to understand that before I figure out-
I can get, in fact, let me, let me try to text Ben and get him pulled in on the call, but I'll start talking.
Because six months is a lot nicer than two to three years. Those are our options? I guess I'm trying to figure out.
So I, I will tell you what I have, what I believe to be the case, and I think Ben will confirm it. We are not the only ones being asked this. It's going to be a competitive process. The longer we're willing to go, the more favorable it will be for them to pick our project over another. So it will be who, I guess, is willing to defer the longest, and how far that goes within, I guess, their revenue forecasting strategies. And, and I'm not, what I'm not sure, if that's regionally or across the state. When I spoke, okay, Ben is waiting to get let in. Ben, are you there?
He might be muted. It comes as muted.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, Ben, I've dropped our nice little bombshell on council. We've talked a little bit about our fund balance and financing strategies. Mayor Protem Johnson has just asked a very specific question about the six-month, the year, the two to three years, and how that might work or play into this. And I think I've given them the right answer, but would you give your understanding of that?
Yeah, and I really don't have a whole lot of information about that. Those are, I think, examples that Campo threw out. We did, we did, they did talk to us today at the TCC meeting about NC DOT's cash flow issues. And essentially, what it comes down to is no one really knows how long DOT is going to have these cash flow issues for. And so that's why, really, it's unknown how long, if we want to do this, how long we would potentially need to be able to defer reimbursement. When I was speaking with Town Manager Page earlier this afternoon and let her know that this request had come through, you know, I told her, essentially, I think our best bet for, for getting this request approved is to be willing to defer reimbursement as long as possible. The longer we can say we're willing to defer reimbursement, the better. But at this point, as of last week, last week's DOT's cash floor report, they're around $52 million below their cash floor right now. So there's no telling when they're going to get back above their cash floor.
Thank you. I'll put it back to Mayor Protem Johnson. Did you have follow-up or comments at this time?
So I, I'm not even sure where I land on this. Clearly, this is a very important project for the town of Morrisville. To defer out two and three years, that gives me a whole lot of heartburn. And if you, if you all could give us, yeah, you can't give us any guarantee, if you, if you can make us comfortable, I think I can get comfortable with six months to a year. I think I can get comfortable with that. But beyond that, that makes me very nervous. I don't know, I'd like to hear from others, but I'm, I'm open to figuring out how to make this project happen sooner than later, because it is so critical.
Okay.
And if I, if, Mayor, if I may, again, again, I, I don't relish putting council on the spot in this position and force an answer, especially when we can't provide you any more information than we have. I also know that I do not have the authority to make this decision by myself. And without Jeannie and I having had any time to talk about it, I don't think either she or I would say we were comfortable in a two to three-year range at all. We, we do have to recognize, and you've heard this from us before, a decision on one thing and something of this magnitude is, it does influence many other decisions and opportunities that may could come across. And we would have to know that and live with that for a longer period than what we would have expected to do. I think, just, just thinking about timing, and Ben, you may be able to, to help with this answer, I don't know, is it will take a couple months if, if Campo's talking about this next week, and then we would get some notice that this project was released. We have the leasing or the letting, or the bidding of a contract, and the letting and the selecting of a contractor, and the execution of a contract. And then we would really know what the cost of the road is. Right now, we have an estimate. We would be that much closer to even having any more focus on our fund balance based on our fiscal year '20 results, and as revenues are coming in from COVID-influenced items. on our fiscal year 20 results and as revenues are coming in from COVID-influenced items. Ben, could we pull out at the 10th hour?
I don't know. I would assume, yes, we could pull out at the 10th hour if we had to. As far as your earlier question about timing, I think realistically, at this point, it would be easily four to six months before we would have our first bill that we would be paying to a contractor between, I mean, I would hazard a guess, it will be, it will be probably at least two to three weeks before we would want to get an answer from DOT. And then we would bid it. We would generally bid the contract for anywhere from two to four weeks. And then there's another, you know, several weeks after we upend the bids where we would need to be doing the negotiating with, you know, signing the contract, negotiating the contract, getting everything set. Generally, at that point, we would still probably push notice to proceed out even a little bit further from the signature date of the contract. So we could, realistically, it could be six months before we would have our first bill that we would pay on this project, where we would be, you know, not reimbursed. And by that point, DOT's cash position may be much better. We just don't know at this time. But I think realistically, we're looking roughly four to six months before we would have to start really spending money on this project.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. Councilmember Skroggin-Johnson, then Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you, Mayor. What I'd like to do maybe is to back this up a little bit for the public's awareness, because we're all talking like we're in the know and where this is, but some of the viewers don't understand that Morrisville Carbon to Road Improvement has been on the books as a priority project for over a decade. And we have applied for funding for the road to be improved from NC 54 to Davis for several cycles, and we were able to get improvements from Savannah to Davis, but we're still waiting to improve it from Savannah to 54. What we're faced with as a council, as I'm understanding it, is the delay in reimbursement is the full cost of construction. So the town has agreed on a, like a 30% match, I believe, and so 70% of the cost of the road improvement would be reimbursed to the town. That reimbursement typically comes shortly after those payments are made, but in this case, we would not see that reimbursement for six months, a year, or two to three years. And Ben, do we have an estimated cost of that construction?
We haven't, we have an estimate. We have been using a round project cost estimate of about $9 million. Councilmember Skroggin-Johnson is correct that we have already committed to a 30% contribution towards that project of 2.7. That would be our funds anyways, with a projected reimbursement of 6.4 million. As the economy has changed, and one of the things that we have talked about with council before is the amount of work that has been going on has allowed for contracts to be bid at a premium by the contractor. With a number of projects by NC DOT being delayed and deferred, there may be more competitive and lower pricing. Again, speculation at this point, but knowing how the economy works, we could have a number of people that are interested in a project to get work that could help us with the competitive nature of the project prices, but we won't know those numbers until we get those bids.
That's very helpful. So just also to put into perspective is, if the project's $9 million, how quickly would we finish the project so that full $9 million would be impacting our budget?
And I'll figure, and Ben can confirm. I think this was projected to be an 18-month project.
Okay.
Ben, am I accurate?
Yes, that's correct. We've been saying 18, 18 to 24 months for completion.
But there's incremental milestone payments? So it's not, hey, at the end, it's pay-as-you-go to milestones?
Right. Generally, we would pay every month, and then we would get reimbursed a portion every month as we go through.
Okay. So that's important to consider, is the duration of the project, how much our payments would be each month. The time we wouldn't receive any reimbursement on any of our payments is important, because if it's a year, then it's a lag of a year, but we'd still be paying more money towards future work as we're receiving reimbursement from previous work. So it's, I know that this project keeps getting tossed around, so I really would like to see if we can think about some sort of loan in order, as we move a little further down the curve, because we will be significantly impacted. A $9 million cost against a $38 million operating budget is a significant bill for a town of our size. But I still think that this is significant enough for us to explore what we can do to possibly make this happen. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Skroggin-Johnson. I'm going to go to Councilmember Garamella. I missed his chat earlier, and then we'll go to Councilmember Rao.
Yeah, my first, I think most of my questions are answered. So like Benjamin, another question I have, Ben, is if we say yes, like today, then how many months will it take before they come back to us and say, yes, you got it?
I, I'm not sure. Based on the information I've received from Campo, they're just preparing to put together a request for several LAP projects to go, to request DOT let us move them forward. My guess is that DOT will take, I would, I would guess at least a couple of weeks. It could be a month, it could be more, but I would say it would be at least a couple of weeks that DOT would take before they would be able to say, yes, you can move forward with your project with the deferred reimbursement plan.
Okay. And so then, then my question is, it's around, what, eight million or nine million? Because like, you know, we have put some already into it, right? As part of the initial, or is it just part in the LAP salary? No, I'm going to say LAP phone.
You are correct. We've put money into the project, but the construction estimate is nine million.
Okay. So that's purely the construction, not the money that we have used?
Correct.
Okay. And who, like, my main question is, when I'm thinking, if we say, like, say, one year, that's where I am going with, and they'll come back and say, no, we, you didn't make the cut, but is this project still part of the Campo approved, or does it slide away? Because now everything is a new thing, right? Because they might have committed some other projects which were not. So how does that place, place it into our, if we don't make this cut?
That, that was actually discussed today at the TCC meeting. At this point, there are no plans by Campo to reprogram money that has been obligated to projects like this. We are lucky with our Morrisville Carbon to Road project in that we have had all of our funding obligated, which means it has technically been set aside for the project from the federal and state standpoint. So the likelihood that it would be, that our, that money would be taken away is very, very low. So Campo is more likely to reprogram funding that has not been obligated.
So that, so, okay, then, then my question would be, like, okay, we don't make the cut this time. Will we make the cut next year to do it, instead of defer and all those scenarios? So basically, since you're saying this money will not be taken away, so when they get the budget next year, will we, will we be on that list?
We will, I think realistically, we would stay as a funded project from Campo and LAP. The bigger question is, when will DOT get to a point where they can feel comfortable reimbursing us? And the one thing I learned a little bit about today during the Campo meeting that goes into this and explains why DOT has made this decision is that even though this is, this project is being reimbursed with federal funds, DOT's practice for a long time has been that they reimburse projects with state funds, and then DOT goes and asks the federal government for reimbursement a little bit later. And they've done that in the past because they had the funding to do it, and it gets money back to the local governments much quicker. And so, but because of that practice, that is why we are now where we are at with the project being suspended, because DOT is below that cash floor and they cannot spend any money. They have to spend as little money as possible right now until they get back above that cash floor. I believe, I'm not certain, but I believe part of this request that Campo is making is that, because they talked about it a little bit today, is that Campo and some of the other larger NPOs are hoping to be able to work with DOT over the next few months to see if they can change their practice, and instead of using state funds to reimburse localities, just send our reimbursements directly to the federal government. The problem is that that usually takes longer to get that reimbursement. So I think this is, this, part of this request from Campo is probably to try and come up with an intermediate plan to get these projects moving while they work with DOT to maybe try and change their practice or give DOT time to get back above that cash floor. So with all that being said, there's, as Martha said, we have no idea how long it could take us. If we request deferred reimbursement, we have no, no idea how long DOT will need that deferral. But Campo has been very clear, if we're not comfortable with an indeterminate deferral, we should put out there what we're comfortable with and see what DOT says.
No, that's, that's very helpful, Ben, because I was thinking the same way, you know, why do we have to go to the federal, if it's a federal fund, so that we can get it quicker? Yeah. So, so my take is one year, because we are going for the bond too next year. Then it helps us to look healthy, so that at least we have that kind of a buffer after. If we say two to three years, then we pretty much have to repurpose a lot of shifting around, and this will take away all the thing. And we have to keep, and I think that's what Martha and Jeannie have to look, you know, our AAA bond rating and all kinds of things that go into it to have. So I'll go with one year. And also, like, my, my joy was shot layered, you know, but I want to put it out there. We ended with, you know, scenario S, scenario Satish. So do we have to go more scenarios? Because we have not approved it now. So to go and revamp it and see what we can do, because this is a very important project. So that, that's the reason, like, Martha, I just leave that to you and Jeannie, if we can work and see what, what we can get more out of it.
And I, I know you're being a little funny and silly, but what you've actually, I would tell you, again, who would have known it would have worked out this way? But the allocation of the $900,000 to your roadway and transportation fund that adds to the capacity that exists in that one does buffer us from the burden on just a fund balance, that we would, again, you wouldn't be able to make other road project choices, but, but this has been our priority road project that we've been trying to advance forward. And probably starting tomorrow, we would be able to talk to our financial advisors and, and as we would normally do in advance of a conversation like this, come up with some of those strategies. We are strong, we are healthy, we, we have encouraged the retention of the fund balance for what we've told you are when opportunities to come up. And this is probably not the one we expected, and it has some different implementations, but this is why you have a healthy fund balance, so that you can take advantage if you choose to. There is a long-term impact, and it would probably influence our strategies. Again, we've already mentioned triggers at mid-year that may be considered differently to support this project, if that's what council's desire is.
Okay. So, but you don't think we have any room to work on more scenarios? Because I know we are putting 900 now, and it might, I'm assuming, even when it will be one more year. So we are almost putting $2 million. So out of nine minus two, seven million is what we are looking to go into the fund balance. But if there are any areas that you think that we can go back and look, okay, how do we shift priorities, then I am willing to listen to that and work with you guys. That's all I have.
I would not be recommending that at this point in time. I would not.
Okay. Councilmember Rao, then Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time, I won't ask all the specifics that Councilmember Garamella alluded to. He had really great points, along with Councilmember Skroggin-Johnson and the others. But I think that I'm fine with one year. I think this is a critical project, and we have to look at all, all solutions out there possible to continue it, because I think it is something that's been on the books for a long time. With that being said, I think, for the, I think this is a, a clear signal and warning of the new normal, the new transportation normal that we're living in. And it gives me significant concern that we have been completely blindsided in this process to, and I know it's nobody's fault, it's not the governor's fault, it's not Secretary Boyet's fault, but, you know, quite frankly, I think the state of North Carolina needs to have a much clearly identified transportation strategy moving forward, because I see this being the new normal, with them being so below the cash levels, for them to come and say, well, give us a decision, and there's no guarantee. I mean, this must be happening in every city. So I think, I, you know, I think this council needs to commend ourselves for having the vision of allocating reserve funds for transportation, which I think is something that we're going to have to do more of, not only in this budget, but future budgets. I know, Mayor Colley, you represent us on the League of Cities, and I think it'd be very important for us to work with you and the whole council to have a very honest dialogue with Secretary Boyet in terms of what are the options here for not only Morrisville, other cities? The CARES Act allocates funding for transportation, aviation, transit, rail, but there was mention of $454 billion being set aside by the Treasury Department for emergency loans to states and localities. So I think that it's so critical that we partner with Cary and other towns to make sure that we are not fighting this battle alone, because, you know, what's going to prevent them from coming in every time we do a transportation project? So I just think that we need to really, I think, have, and that's not for this meeting, but I think for future meetings, a work session even on transportation strategy and how we're going to come up with a solution. And so I hope that Governor Cooper and Secretary Boyet will come up with, you know, solutions for us. And I know, I know there's no easy answers, but I just wanted to get out, get that out there to the public, because we've been blindsided. And I mean, you know, I could see this happening again and again and again. And so I'm looking, the only silver lining in the cloud is looking at future bond referendum, which we're talking about next year, in terms of, you know, looking at our transportation needs and just having to take those, those obligations. and just having to take those obligations on ourself. But, you know, we've invested over $50 million of our own money on our roads and for them to come and tell us, well, give us an answer by tomorrow morning and oh, by the way, we have no guarantee, is bad management and it needs to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts. Councilmember Rabadi, please.
So I 100% agree with Steve that it's absurd to try to make a decision like this in 12 hours. I was wondering if, I'm not exactly sure how the Campo funding works, but do we have an option to go directly to the federal government to seek reimbursement? If Campo is not, the idea is that they're not going to pay us back right away? That being the case, since the money would come eventually from the federal government, do we have an option to just skip that step and try to get reimbursed directly? Maybe that would be faster. It's just, that's a thought that I had.
Would staff like to react to that?
Ben, can you explain the current process?
Yeah, so the short answer is no, we wouldn't be able to do that. The way things are set up in North Carolina is that North Carolina Department of Transportation is the, for lack of a better term, direct, the recipient of all federal funds. So all, even though Campo gets dedicated federal funds that they're allowed to allocate to jurisdictions for projects, all federal funding ultimately still has to flow through DOT, NC DOT. So no matter what, we have to continue partnering and working with NC DOT. I think the bigger question is, can Campo and some of the other large NPOs in the state be able to work with DOT and change their process if it looks like DOT is going to remain under that cash floor for very long?
Councilmember Rabadi, any other thoughts? I like going outside the box. Any other ideas?
No, no, sorry.
Okay, I have the next comment and then we'll see if Ben Howell wants to chime back in, then Councilmember Fender. This is unfortunate that they had to stop this project at all, but I see this as an opportunity to keep it moving forward. At first, we were expecting and we had offered to say that you could postpone reimbursement. Now they're looking to make it very formal. I'd be okay saying we'll delay reimbursement for at least a year and then let us know if you need any further than that. I'd like to get them essentially on the hook and move this forward as much as possible. I think to Councilmember Rauv's point, we are a little bit on our own moving forward on road projects. So they are our roads, even though they're NC DOT roads, they're within our town and ultimately it's our responsibility to make sure they get improved. So tax dollars, whether they flow through DOT or straight from our residents, it's all coming out of our residents' pockets at some point. So I'd say this is an opportunity to go ahead and get this project moving forward. We feel it's really important. Councilmember Garamella mentioned possibly giving up other things within the budget in order to make sure this can go forward. I'd actually think of going maybe the other way. Right now, we have $900,000 set aside. If we were to add another $300,000 and make it two pennies for roads, knowing that in the future, if we're going to have to take out loans, it's just going to cost us more later anyway. This is a way to have interest-free loans to ourselves. But that's taking us away from the balance of making sure that we're not overburdening our residents and our businesses. But I did want to put that out there, that eventually it's coming out of our pockets some way. So if we flatten the spike that's going to be happening in our cash flow needs, that was just something I wanted to put out there. Next comment, I have Ben Howell in the list. Did you already mention what you were going to share, Mr. Howell?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then we go to Councilmember Fender.
Thank you. I agree with the other town council members of, you know, going up to a year deferment. We've been waiting on this road project forever. We're beyond the time of when it needs to be done. I did have one question though, just to clarify. When they say deferment of six months or a year or whatever it is, deferment, when does the clock start ticking? Is it deferred from when our first invoice we receive and we pay that? Is it six months deferred from when we paid? Six months to get reimbursed or a year to get reimbursed?
I think at this point, the, those timeframes are, would be roughly from today, you know, from now in the, you know, from the now to the next month or two. It's really, I think that question is really more around, just around how comfortable we are to wait on our, to have our reimbursement deferred. But yeah, I mean, that one year, it's not, I don't know, I can't say it's necessarily from any specific point in time other than I think generally now or when they approve the request would be how we would look at it.
Okay, so if that's the case and we are willing to defer for a year, we're really between like with Town Manager Page was saying, we still have to go out for bid, retrieve the bids and then issue or sign the contract and we're talking, it could be six months before we receive the first invoice. That year deferral really is more like six months. So I'm definitely willing to go for a year. I think our town's residents would want us to move aggressively on this.
Okay, so I think staff presented everything they were able to and they did mention that this may be, end up being like a competitive item. Like when we apply for LAP funds, 30% is more likely to get you where you want to be rather than 20% for this project. We did a match of 30% and that's gotten us to this point. I think, would staff agree that they heard that we're willing to go to defer for a year at this time? Do I see some head nods from council that that's pretty much what we're looking for right now? And if they push back on that, we'd love to hear from them again, but we're hoping that a year will be sufficient. Town Manager Page, does that sound, does that sound like what you heard?
Yes, and first, Ben, do you have what you need at this point? You and I can talk in the morning if necessary.
Yes, yeah, I think I have what I need.
Okay, and Jeannie and I will immediately activate all the support, resources and information to give you the best options that we can provide to explore.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any other surprises for us, Town Manager Page?
Absolutely not.
Okay, well, like I said, this sounds to me like an opportunity. So thank you for bringing it forth, we appreciate it. At this time, we expended about 5:00 minutes on the staff's items. I'd like to say maybe we can give 45 minutes for the council. So that's pushing further than our initial thought, but I think it's important for the council to move forward. So can we commit to trying to go till eight to hear from each other? Can I get some head nods? Not getting a lot of head nods. Should we cut it to a half hour, see how we do then? Okay, why don't we do a couple and see how we go? I'll recognize Mayor, Councilmember Scroggs Johnson when she's unmuted.
Okay, I have a topic and I don't think it'll take very long. So, but I do need assistance from Erin.
Okay, so why don't we all try to do a quick speed round and see where we're at after that? Is that acceptable to the council? Looking for head nods because I can see everyone.
Yep.
Okay, it sounds like Councilmember Scroggs Johnson first, please.
Yes, so Erin, are you able to share that tracker?
Yeah, I've actually got either Jeannie or Eric one can get that pulled up for you.
Thank you. So this is not for, okay, pretend that you can see the words. You need to zoom a little bit more.
I am, I'm trying, trying.
So what I'm about to share with you is actually the foundational tracking for the roundtable activity that council has during its work sessions on a monthly or bimonthly basis. And we've had a tracker in place since 2019. We have been adding to that tracker since and we don't always have roundtables every month. We just have it periodically. But I have been a longstanding critic of the fact that we never take credit for completing our items. We keep just adding to the pile and hoping that magic happens. So I asked Erin for a copy of the tracker and what I've done is I've added some elements for everybody. I've put status in there. If something is no longer relevant, I've completed that item out. I do hope that you have an opportunity after the meeting to take a look and give feedback. But I also added some timing for each of the activities that are introduced, when a follow-up should occur. So on the left-hand side is a status, whether it's in progress or completed. We will have a presentation timestamp that you will know when it's introduced. Whoever introduces is considered a sponsor. Also, we do have the staff, sorry, I know, I see you struggling to follow me. I'm trying to move from left to right. And the action is the staff information, but how to proceed? We have many ways to proceed on a roundtable item and I think we struggle with how to proceed in order to make it complete. So I've given some suggestions. The first four in this list is budget. So if we've requested something and it's actually in our budget, that's either proposed or it has been done, then that will show up as the mechanism to how we are meeting that. Most of these are staff updates. The next area is the next expected date of action or completion in some places. And then on the far end is when you want an update. So over time, if we put these on there and nothing happens, we don't really know. There's different ways we might receive the information, but this tracker is going to give us a little more consistency when we can look forward to maybe either getting an update or if there's a staff update, you should have your answer by that time. We evaluate, we close it out or we add a new item if something has changed. So just wondering if, I don't really want to go into the weeds. I'm just thinking about this process and this tracker is something to help council keep items in a better framework so we know how we're doing progress and not just adding to a list.
Okay, thank you for taking a look at it and helping it along. So is your ask for us to take a look at it and send any feedback directly to you?
Right, right, because I want to know if this is going to be helpful to you. And if you just want to scroll down, you can see most of these, there's only like, there's over half of them are now completed, so.
Okay, that's good news, so this process is in process. So that sounds good.
It's to support us and to keep each other more informed in a timely manner.
Okay, sounds good. Councilmember Rauv, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just have one issue to bring up. I'll make it really quick. It's just an idea. I think I would, I've got a call tomorrow with some folks about crowdfunding options and some different small business recovery options out there that the state's working on with the Golden Leaf Fund and with the NC Paces Act. So what I would want to know is, would it be okay sometime for us to consider a work session or could we have the staff work with the chamber to come back with different options on business recovery? I've already mentioned the crowdfunding, but the other one is angel funds that the chamber could raise through businesses and also, you know, different ways out there that we can, you know, look at helping businesses. And so if something immediate, I just think it's, I'd like to have options brought before the council by the staff and chamber and even maybe having a work session sometime where we can, you know, identify what the options are. So that's just something to ask. I'm going to be emailing the council what happens on the call tomorrow and then, you know, basically just sort of see where we go from there, so.
Okay, if we could move back to the Hollywood Squares mode so that we can see the rest of the council, that would be good. Okay, thank you very much. So in order to facilitate this, it might be easier for me to see faces and get some head nods. But first, did Town Manager Page want to make a quick comment on this item before we discuss it further?
Yes, sir, just a reminder that council actually does have a June 22nd work session. That's that Monday before the second meeting of the month and that is typically where you have your standard roundtable time that you could continue to talk about this tracker or any other roundtable items. We have not programmed any other work into that meeting. We could, or council could use that entire work session for any of these items or topics.
Okay, would council be interested in devoting maybe 20 to 30 minutes of that meeting to discussion of small business support moving forward? Looking for some kind of head nods or thumbs up. I see in two, three, I see four, looking for five, five. Okay, so we have support for programming some talk about discussion. Councilmember Rauv, if you could bring back what comes in your call? If staff could liaison with Emily Ziegler and the chamber to see what their thoughts would be moving forward to have, so we can have a productive discussion on that? We'd really appreciate it. Councilmember Rauv, can we move on to the next item?
Please, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just circling back, Councilmember Scroggs Johnson, did you get what you needed on your item?
Yes, that was just for awareness and then feedback outside of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're at, Councilmember Fender, please.
Yes, I have a resolution that I would like to introduce to the town council. You all have already seen it and I have talked to directly, I guess, six of the town council members. And, you know, we have received numerous emails from the public, from Mooresville residents, requesting that Mooresville pass this resolution to be submitted as public comments to the DEQ, asking them to deny Wake Stone's mining permit. The time is of the essence. I want to introduce it tonight so that we can work through any comments or any words that we want to modify so that we can bring it back for our meeting June 9th and vote on it. So I don't know how exactly you want to proceed from here. Can I read the resolution or what would you like for me to do?
I think we're all familiar with it. If it's possible to put it in presentation mode for everyone to see, including the public.
Can you access the one I sent most recently?
And then any council members who would like to make comments? If you can go over into the chat box, I'll recognize you for thoughts. And then we'll go back to Hollywood Squares to see if we have head nods to have this be presented for a vote on Tuesday's meeting, June 9th. Okay, Ms. Fender, if you'd like to read it, you can.
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to do that. So this is a resolution supporting the DEQ denying Wake Stone's mining permit. Whereas the town of Mooresville's mission statement is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. And whereas the town of Mooresville's objectives include providing mobility options for our non-driving citizens and being responsible stewards of the natural environment. Whereas the town of Mooresville has invented Whereas the town of Mooresville has invested in the Crabtree Creek Greenway and the Hatcher Creek Greenway to specifically connect the town of Mooresville to Lake Crabtree County Park and to the Breedy Creek Park entrance of our beloved William B. Umstead State Park. Whereas Mooresville residents and businesses have relocated to our town for an enhanced quality of life and connected community. Whereas Mooresville residents are frequent users of Lake Crabtree County Park and Umstead State Park for hiking, running, biking, and family outings. Whereas Wake Stone's new quarry pit on the Oddfellows Track will severely impact our residents' quality of life due to the loss of tree canopy and wildlife, as well as the resulting pollution of our air and water resources. Whereas the Conservation Fund, a nonprofit, offered to buy the Oddfellows Track from RDU... Can you scroll up a little bit? To expand Umstead State Park. Whereas the Oddfellows Track is on the North Carolina Division of Parks and Recreation Critical Land Acquisition List to purchase and add to Umstead State Park. And I did verify this by contacting, I think, George Norris with the Parks and Rec Division, and he confirmed that this is still the case. Whereas all public and interested parties have the explicit right to submit public comments regarding the Wake Stone's permit application. And then, whereas per General Statute 7451-D3, Wake Stone's operation will violate standards of air quality, service water quality, and groundwater quality. Whereas per General Statutes 7451-D5, Wake Stone's operation will have a significantly adverse effect on the purposes of a publicly owned park, forest, or recreation area. And Councilmember Johnson... Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson and I spoke earlier this afternoon regarding these two sentences. And I do agree with her that we should modify these two... To make... To take out the per general statute part of it. And we can talk about that further. And then, lastly, now therefore be it resolved that the Mooresville Town Council hereby requests the NC Department of Environmental Quality to deny Wake Stone's mining permit application on the basis of its severe negative impact to Mooresville residents' quality of life and the natural environment and connectivity of our town. So, lastly, I just want to say that while the town of Mooresville doesn't have any direct authority, you know, that public land is owned by Wake County, Durham County, City Raleigh, and the city of Durham, you know, we do... The town of Mooresville does have a very invested interest in what happened to that park and the environment around that park. You know, that park and Lake Crabtree Park are huge, you know, what? Can't think of the name, what I want to say. They're huge attractors to this area and enhance our quality of life. So, you know, I do think we have every right to, you know, state our opinion or, you know, our input, feedback to the Department of Environmental Quality.
Thank you very much for bringing this forth. I believe Mayor Pro Tim Johnson has a comment, and then I have a comment after her.
Councilmember Fender and I did have the opportunity to speak this afternoon, and one of the things we talked about is the fact that is... Well, I think, anyhow, it's not a fact, but I feel like it's always easier to react to something than to create it. I think, you know, the work that we do is always hard, but to create something and put it down on paper is, I think, the most difficult thing. So, I appreciate the fact that we have something to react to, and I appreciate the comments from Councilmember Fender about the fact that we don't have direct control here. This is not in our authority. But a resolution should be written so that we can add value to the process, you know, bring some kind of value and to hopefully make an impact or affect some kind of change. So, to that end, I think it's really important that the resolution be credible. So, I appreciate her comments about my kind of heartburn, especially over those two last "whereas's" with the absolutes that were worded in there. I think it's... That's really problematic because clearly it's DEQ that's going to be doing the due diligence work to figure out if this Wake Stone's operation will violate, you know, air quality, subsurface water quality, groundwater quality. I think the comments at the top part of the resolution that are in our controlling, in our direct control and reiterate our positions are really valuable. The quality of life, the fact that we value our parks and our greenways, all that, you know, clearly is very important. So, I would just say we need to tweak this a little bit more, maybe a whole lot more, I mean, based on, you know, how anybody's positioned. But I think it's important that whatever we end up with, that we think about the fact that we want to affect or input some quality... Maybe I say, we want to input some quality information to be reviewed by a partner. DEQ is a partner of the town of Mooresville. So, I think we need to be mindful of the relationship that we currently have with DEQ and the relationship that we'll have with them moving forward on future projects here in the town of Mooresville.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I would add to that that the absolutes may be a little problematic, but I would be very comfortable if we said something along the lines of, "We are very concerned that the water quality might be damaged," or something like that. So, referencing the general statute and then indicating that we are concerned might get us where we want to be, or extremely concerned. So, rather than giving the impression that we're trying to be experts, they are the experts, but we are definitely concerned about those items. And I'd be happy to support this on Tuesday for it to move forward, to come to us for a vote, because I think it's important to advocate for more open space, especially since Wake County wants to have thirty percent open space within Wake County, and this would be an important portion of getting them towards that goal. Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, I would be pleased and proud to support this resolution. And I think that the fact that Mooresville citizens use the park, love the park, that it's a point of attraction for Mooresville and that we consider that we have a key stake in the park, I do think that that adds something to the conversation. And I think that we're really the only ones that can add that with a voice of authority. So, yeah, I don't... I actually don't have an opinion one way or the other on quoting statutes, but I do want to mention that I think we're bringing something of value to the conversation.
Excellent. I don't see anyone else in the chat box. Would anyone else like to make any comments before I look for head nods? Okay. Looking for head nods for... Okay. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, and then Councilmember Garamella, please. And then, Councilmember Rao. Scroggins-Johnson first, please. Thank you.
So, there is a delay, it seems like, between when I type and when you're seeing the comment. So, if you could just pause a little bit longer, I think will be just great. I would like to thank Councilmember Fender for bringing this forward. We want to have a great quality of life for Mooresville residents and businesses, of course. And the town has invested a significant amount of money in our park system. And we kind of look around when we are spending our money and looking for complementary adjoining parks, like where are the Cary parks? Where are the RTP parks? Where are the Wake County parks? That's part of our consideration when we're planning and investing for our residents and businesses. So, we need to speak up that we are investing and we are a stakeholder in this overall situation. The absolutes, I agree with Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, that we don't want to absolutely say that we know more or we know that this is a complete violation, because the courts are deciding whether or not that is. But what we can say is that Mooresville has invested a significant amount of money in our parks and system, and we want to also have the enjoyment of the parks from the Wake County system and on the RDU property and the Umstead Park. So, it's... We're a stakeholder that's the closest to this situation, and that's where our voice, I think, would resonate the most. So, thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, and then Councilmember Rao, please.
I agree. I think this is... I'm okay with the resolution, but I agree with Liz that I would be very careful in how we craft our words, because we are partners with DEQ, we are partners with RDU, we are partners with Wake County, you know. And if it can be put in a way that, yes, it is close to us and the quality of life and open spaces are a critical part of the fabric that we live in. And in that areas, like, I'm not a fan of putting the general statues and trying to tell them it looks like a bossy, "It's just a resolution." You're just, you know, asking them, you know, how to do it. There is not... We don't have any authority on any of those. So, said that, I would just let staff and Frank look at it, draft it, and send it back to us. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao.
I just want to thank Councilmember Fender for bringing this forward. I'm fine with the staff, you know, coming back with something after taking all their feedback. And I've actually come to value the parks even more during the whole COVID-19, just because I've seen people treasure, even including myself, going on a walk, going to play tennis. I don't know what I would do if I didn't have a park close to where I live. I'd just go crazy. So, I think we... And I want to thank all the citizens who have engaged on this issue. So, that's all I want to say. So, I look forward to supporting this after I see a final draft, and thank you for bringing this forward, Councilmember Fender.
So, I think I've heard general support from all the council members with the direction to have staff tweak it a little bit, given what they've heard tonight. Does that sound acceptable to you, Councilmember Fender, as the person who brought this forth?
Yeah, that sounds wonderful.
Okay.
Appreciate... And I appreciate the other council members' feedback. You know, Vicky and I talked previously, and I made a few changes, and then Liz. And hearing all your comments tonight, I appreciate it.
Okay. Wonderful. If I'm reading the chat correctly, I believe Councilmember Robati was next, if she had an item. Did you have anything, Councilmember Robati?
Mine was a roundtable item, but I see we're significantly over time, so I can hold it until the roundtable in a couple weeks.
Okay. I would be next, then. I circulated Cities Are Essential resolution for our reactions from the rest of the council. Essentially, federal funding has been going to counties and states. This is an ask from the National League of Cities and from many municipalities across the nation to try to indicate that it's important to have some direct funding to the local municipalities. We are fortunate that we have a good partnership with Wake County, who is planning on giving some pass-through dollars. But the fair, direct federal emergency support to reopen and rebuild local American economies, I think, is an important thing, just like we support North Carolina League of Municipalities when they advocate on our behalf. I think that we can be an important partner in the nationwide endeavor to try to get more direct funding to help many cities. We are fortunate that we are not having to make severe cuts, like many of the cities around the nation. So, I just opened it up to any comments from the rest of the council, whether or not this is okay to bring this forth on Tuesday for a possible approval. I see Mayor Pro Tim Johnson has a comment.
I would say same thing as we did with the last resolution. Hand it over to staff, make sure they put it in the format that we typically put it in and bring it forward on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. I'm assuming, since everyone's seen it and we just scrolled through it, we don't need to read it. Does anyone else have any other comments before we go to see if there's head nods? Okay. Seeing no other comments, if we could get out of presentation mode. Can we... Some head nods if people are okay with having staff take a look at this and bring it forth on Tuesday? One, two, three, four. Okay. Staff, you have what you need to move forward on that one? We didn't give any feedback. Just put it in our format, and if you think that there's better language, please bring it forth in a better form. Is that okay, Town Manager Paige?
Yes, sir. Just a point of clarification for council. You will actually be getting your agenda for Tuesday tomorrow morning. And so, just from a turnaround perspective, we will make sure that these get added as the placeholders so that they are appearing on the agenda, they won't be attached yet, and we'll get them circulated a little bit through email and then can add them after council has reviewed so that then they're available for the public to see before Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. Looking around for the comment box, chat box, does anyone have any other items that they'd like to bring up now? Councilmember Robati mentioned that on June 22. She'll be bringing something forward to that group. And we have Councilmember Rao's item already on the 22 as well. Okay. Okay. Seeing no other comments, does staff have anything for the good of the body before we entertain a motion to adjourn?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I recognize Councilmember Rao.
So moved. I move that we adjourn.
Awaiting a second. And Councilmember Ann Robati?
Second.
Okay.
The motion to adjourn.
I have a motion from Steve Rao and from Councilmember Rao, and a second from Councilmember Robati. Town Clerk Smith, if you could please conduct a roll call vote on the motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Carley?
Aye.
The motion to adjourn passes unanimously.
Thank you. Good work tonight, everyone. It is 7:48. We are adjourned.